As Mr. Crutcher does say, whatever we do is better than what we've got. The crystal ball of legislation is cloudy, so I don't know how well we can rely on that or not rely on that.
I'm ready to make the motion. I make a motion that we enter into agreement with HART and purchase the Duo system.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
The Duo.
The first.
The Duo, okay, so we've got, we've got a motion to select the Duo system as our new election equipment from Commissioner Matthews. And then it kind of echoed, we've got a second on that from Commissioner Jones. This is for the selection of the equipment.
So, okay. I just want to say that the county judge is the person that will have to sign the contract.
Yes, yes. We're voting on the, I split those up on the agenda because I want to make sure one is selection and then one's approved in contract.
Yes, I thought we were going to need latter.
The, okay, so the selection equipment is the Duo system. Commissioner Matthews, second from Commissioner Jones, any further discussion on that?
They're also calling that hybrid system.
Hybrid.
They're also hybrid Duo.
Hybrid Duo. So we're all clear that it is the one that has a piece of paper physically associated with it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Let's have the motion carry. So then that would bring us to item number twenty-six is to consider approval of the purchase contract for the new system. So this is approval of that contract as it's presented for the Duo system, which you would see Duo at the top of the page following page twelve.
Yeah, it's also on page fifteen. The difference is it says Duo on the last line for us to contract it now.
Mr. Crutcher, could you remind us again, we are gaining more voting machines with this, isn't that correct?
Well, that is correct because the machines themselves, since they store no data on them, can be the ones we use for early voting, which is around twenty devices and also be used on election day, so that increases our numbers. I mean, we're not way above and beyond what we are now, but we are increasing those. Once this contract is approved, then I have to submit it to the Secretary of State. They have to approve it before we can purchase it. That should take less than a day. Then that would be submitted to HART, who would submit that to Government Capital for the, uh, finance agreement. And then that will be brought to the court for the last step.
Okay, this contract, it has the paper, you know, that's included in this process.
Well, I had, yeah, asked them to include enough paper for the first year.
And we can shop from there.
Yes.
There's, uh, appears to be fifteen thousand sheets.
Right.
That should. At twenty-seven seventy-five.
Get us through this.
And so as far as our equipment that we're using now, I know they're not offering us any trade-in, but that's something that we can discuss.
I mean, we can try, but no one's buying this, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the only ones that would buy it would be those that are using it. Everyone that's using it is doing the same thing, you know, or in the process. So, I mean.
It's not market part at all.
No, I mean, I could try and figure it out and just see before we, before they come, but the chances are pretty low that someone's gonna want to buy it. Uh, it must be just, you know, there are statutes that require, um, I don't have them in front of me here, none of my heart, but that stuff has to be destroyed. Once taken out of use, and HART's gonna do that for free, I mean, they're gonna take it to do it for us. That's part of this contract. Uh, then we'll get a certification from them once it's destroyed, you know, for our, so we meet our obligations. But do you have a message?
I'd like to defer the contract.
We've got a motion to approve the contract and purchase of the HART Duo system.
Second.
Commissioner Matthews, second from Commissioner Ashby, any further discussion?
Do you know just the one that was giving us a discount on their other product?
Uh, I mean, they're, uh, I did ask him that question, the, they make more money on the other one, so they have more room to do that, so.
I was just trying to keep it more aligned with.
Right. Well, I don't want to say they make more money on that, I think they have more.
They have more profit in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a different margin.
Because I did ask him, I knew that question would come up.
Yep.
And I was just.
That's what he shared with me.
Yeah. They have more room in that one, too.
Uh, we've got a motion and second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Let's have the motion carries. Mr. Crutcher, thank you for all the work you've done on that, put all that together. Uh, item number twenty-seven, discussion and action with Commissioners' Court to go out for an architect firm to buy an RFQ on infrastructure, on the building of a new jail next to Woodman Unit and a new justice center at the old Foxworth location. Mr. Ashby.
Judge, if it's okay, can we move twenty-seven down past, it kind of goes in hand in hand with there, with Commissioner Moore's and number thirty.
I, I am more than willing, I just took them in order.
Yeah, I know, and I apologize.
No, that's all right, that's all right.
If we can put that down past thirty, then I'll, we'll go to twenty-eight.
Okay, so let's, all right, put it down past thirty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, noted. We will suspend actions on item number twenty-seven based off the recommendation of Commissioner Ashby. So going to item number twenty-eight, discussion and action to form a committee for the building of the new Corial County Jail, suggesting Commissioner Ashby, Commissioner Matthews, Sheriff Williams, and anyone else Commissioners' Court feels will be needed. Mr. Ashby.
Just that, I'd like to make a motion that we form a committee to get started with the procurement of what's gonna be number thirty and thirty-one. But, uh, I'll, I just appreciate everybody's input on what you think about it, but I think that if we had a committee, we can move a little faster on things and then report back to Commissioners' Court. And I know that only two members of the court can be on a committee. And that's why I suggested, myself and Commissioner Matthews, because we have worked together, some already on, on the jail procedures and moving forward with it. And that's pretty much it.
I visited with TDC, it is part of this, so I guess we can talk about it. I visited with TDC last week, there was a contract that came up that nobody had seen since like nineteen ninety-four that the county and the city entered into. It was something that they told, ordered over to Mr. Bell to look at, but, um, and he talked about the water taps and who owned the lines and the sewer and whatnot. And it basically states that if it is behind the meter, then the state, we need approval from the state. If it's ahead of the meter, and both the sewer and the water are metered, for those of you that don't know that sewer is metered out there. Uh, but anyways, um, then it goes on who's gonna make that approval for the tap. So I visited with Frank Inman, who's Director of Facilities and Engineering with TDCJ. And he's asked me to write a proposal because he needs flow, sewer flow, water flow, what that jail would produce. And obviously, we need to make it as large as possible, even though the money and the funds that would go in the building of the jail now would be a few less beds. But, uh, we really need to think about, because it's part of this too, if, uh, if we go with building the jail on the thirty-three acres, which I think is necessary or, you know, is part of it. Um, that we need to look at that law enforcement center out there as well, my personal opinion. If you're gonna build it out there, not tying the two together, because I've talked about, you know, that's a four point two, I think it's twelve thousand square feet, or was it ten? It was twelve thousand square feet, it'd be four point two million dollars for office space. That's crazy. Uh, I just don't think that the jail contractor needs that, so, I mean, he probably wants it, it's kind of like that profitability thing there. Uh, that's three hundred fifty-four dollars a square foot, way too much money for office space. Sorry, Sheriff. No streets of gold?
No.
Um, you know what I'm talking about. So we, we obviously need that office space and I, I don't have a problem forming a committee, uh, to do it either. I just, uh, there's a lot, there's a lot to the jail. It's not as simple as, as one believe. It's, it's a task. It's expensive. You know, I mentioned in a meeting one day that nobody wants to spend eighteen to twenty million dollars on a jail. I'd like rather put it in road and bridge for people, everybody benefits it. But unfortunately, we had to lock the folks up that are not good people.
Well, everybody would benefit from that, wouldn't they?
Well, some, not everybody, some, but you know what I'm saying.
Talking about the safety.
Well, I understand the safety of it, truly do. I mean, I was in law enforcement for twenty-nine years, I understand the aspect of locking somebody up. But I do understand too that the cost on the citizens for one person violating the law and taking advantage of that freedom, it costs you as well. So that, that's unfortunate, you know, I wish we could make them pay for it themselves, but we can't. Yes, sir.
I had to, I don't know how you say that not everybody would benefit. If you're not spending my tax money at a million and a half dollars a year, uh, you'll be saving my money.
In some points, you know, we, you have to look at the cost that we spend out of county. The debt service on it would be about one point three million, that's the rent of the mortgage to build it, there's no doubt a year. But you have to look at the cost of what it takes for us to house them here versus out of county, you know? And then, and it depends on the situation, there's no doubt, you know, if you house them in McLennan or Mylum. I understand what you're saying, what my whole point behind it is. It's terrible that you had to spend twenty million dollars on a jail, that's what I'm trying to say, you understand? I didn't, I wish we didn't have to have prisons.
To me, to me, the difference is renting a house or buying.
Sure, no doubt.
And there's something that we need to take into consideration too, it's kind of ironic, but this morning the email came from Grayson County Jail in Sherman, Texas.
Yeah.
Wanting twenty-five or thirty male inmate beds.
Right.
I mean, that's an epidemic that's statewide, you know, us farming out inmates to other counties allowing them to, to, uh, house them for us, albeit a lot of places is cheaper.
Right.
But it's gonna run out.
No doubt.
And, and it is right now around us, and, you know, we did this thing with Burnet County, which is a great deal.
Right.
But how long is it gonna last? And if, if, for those that don't know, every one of our contracts within thirty days by either party can be terminated.
I'm not suggesting that we not build one.
No, no.
I'm just, I'm just.
Providing a few facts.
Yeah, I am too, I mean, I visited with the sheriff in Hamilton.
This morning.
Happy with the contract and mail.
This morning, we housed seventy-four out of county. And just say that was gonna be the number from now on. Say our counties that we're housing right now says, we're done, we're out. We got thirty days to find seventy-four beds.
Right.
We're not gonna find seventy-four beds in one spot, we're gonna get ten here, ten there, ten there, from here to El Paso, from here to Amarillo, from here to Del Rio. Then there's where the cost starts, because like Burnet County, they can transport when they can, but ninety percent of the time we're transporting. So that takes two jailers, or a jailer and a deputy, or two deputies, out of, off the street and out of the jail, having to drive all the way to Burnet, Texas in a rickety old van that we've got. That just adds a whole level of civil liabilities, man hours, money, all that. That's just extra information that we can provide to the court. Uh, accurate numbers that will show that it's cost effective to go ahead and pull this trigger. Because if we start to shovel in the ground today, it's two years. It's getting bad now, what's it gonna be like in two years?
I believe we can move faster with forming a committee, and that's the reason I'd like to make that motion. And I'd like, I didn't talk to Sheriff Williams about it, but I'd like, he should be on the committee, of course.
Sure.
And of course with advice from our county attorney.
How many people, Commissioner Ashby and Commissioner Matthews, would y'all entertain being on a committee?
I would think as many as, as, uh, we feel necessary. And we need the different angles and the different perspectives.
Obviously, uh, the county attorney would need to be on it.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure, I was gonna add him, but I was thinking, I don't, I'm not sure that we can. I think he just has to be our advisor to the committee. Because he's gonna, if we form a committee as well on the next item we're gonna talk about, then he will have to advise other committees. We're just gonna add more work, as we mentioned this morning, hopefully not, but.
My advice to y'all would be to keep the committee as small as possible. We have a jail options committee way back when, and I've got, uh, this is not all of it, and I've got a good bit of information on everything that's gone through before. That committee was much larger because it was to decide whether or not we should move forward building a jail, and if so, what size of a jail. I, I think those decisions need to be made by the court, need to be made quickly. And then the committee needs to be, to move forward with getting things lined up and getting documents gathered up, you know? Form that can be presented to the Commissioners' Court for action. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry so much about this committee being large and getting a lot of input. I think that ship is sailed, it's time to move forward.
Well, and my point being that, the reason I asked the question, I mean, to me, it would give quite confusion if we had thirty people on this committee.
That's the reason I only named myself, Matthews, and yourself, and anyone else that we may see that could add to, add, you know, perspectives of the committee. Maybe one other person's what I'm thinking.
Mr. Bell, with that previous committee, were there parameters, I mean, was there a task and purpose? Were there parameters, was there something defined exactly what those, that committee's function and intent was? And what information they were to gather and pull back?
Yes.
I, I would, I would suggest that, uh, if we're going to establish a committee, we need to have those tasks and purpose clearly defined.
The purpose of that committee was to look at the options for building a new jail.
Yes.
Whether or not to add on, remodel, build here, build there, hundred and, there was a couple of different options. One was for a, uh.
Add-on.
Two hundred forty-bed facility, one of them was for a hundred ninety-two.
Ten to ninety-three.
Something bed facility, and, you know, all that was done. And pretty much the decision was made that they wanted to build it down here and wanted to try to do the add-on. And that, but all the design was done for a facility here, add-on, remodel, build standalone down here, and build standalone out there. All the plans are done, and these are the plans right here, we have dated three twenty-six, two thousand twelve, for a Corial County Jail Law Enforcement Center out there. It's got the twelve thousand fifty-three square foot administration and almost forty-four thousand square foot jail. And a bunch of that stuff is already done, and it's not actually updated, obviously. We've got the numbers on the, I've got right here the estimated effect on the tax rate for a two hundred and forty-bed jail construction and operations. Being prettier than it was then, back then it was seventeen point six cents.
Say that one more time.
Seventeen point six cents?
I would, I would think, uh, Commissioner Ashby would need some, one of the financial consultant along with that committee, or some, somebody to help with some cost analysis. Maybe that being, or, you know, is the, what are we gonna do to actually be able to raise our tax rate to support it?
Yeah.
But it's gonna raise the tax rate beyond the, probably beyond the voter approval rating.
So your goodness.
That's a tax rate of seventy-one cents, seventy-two cents.
So are you suggesting?
Seventeen point six is what you said.
So we would take out the portion that's already being spent for the out of county, so that.
It's one point, it's one point one.
So that's five cents, six cents, is that right? Five or six cents, so.
Four and a half. We'll, we'll, we'll just say.
Twelve and a half cents, it's a twelve and a half cent increase, so I think there's no doubt, it's just a fact, a number. And some of that money is already, you know, a little bit of it, like in this, there were two full-time guardians in this, in these numbers. We already have a contract for some of that, so, I mean, some of that would come out of there, but it's a, these numbers would be very easy to update, obviously, it's in a spreadsheet. It appears by the typing that, and Mr. Roberts made something to do with it, typing looks like mine, underlines it, like Mr. Roberts.
Now, the reason, the reason I'd wanna see like task and purpose is, I mean, we do have, have questions to answer. Because we've got some historical data, and, and I know you are, you've got a penchant, penchant for keeping accurate historical data, and I do appreciate that.
Right.
But with that, you know, time goes on. So much of that data is eight years old, some of it's approaching ten years old.
The utility service study is remarkably first to go out of the file, just to give you an idea of the.
Well, with that, what I was, what I was saying is, uh, I know I've talked with the sheriff about, uh, a facility analysis study. I don't know where we are with getting that back, because where they were projecting that we got needed two hundred forty-four beds or a hundred ninety-two beds. I still don't know exactly what that recommendation was at, during the two thousand eight, nine, ten timeframe, which initiated the last, last round. So I, I don't know what that, that jail standard recommendation was for that time period. I think we're gonna move forward, there, there needs to be an update on that, uh, because we're, we're talking about information that's eight, nine years old.
I think by forming the committee, we can move forward on some of this through the committee, uh, as far as the research, as far as the, uh, the financial data, the updated data that we need can be done smoother and quicker, because we don't have to wait for Commissioners' Court and one person, you know? We, we, the committee can do it and present it to the court in a timely manner, I just think it'd move faster if we did that. And Ms. Tiger.
I served on the two committees that we had for the other jail. And Mr. Bell is right, everything is practically done. And there's also grants and things like that that we can get. Uh, we could almost build a jail for free at one time, that's how good the grants were. So that's what the committee can do, they can search out these grants, see if we can go to the federal government, state government. That's what we did in the last two committees that I was on.
I also served on that committee to, uh, to, uh, get the jail approved by, by the county. And, uh, I kind of felt like I lied to them, because I went around selling it and nobody did anything.
So the two thousand seven recommendation from jail standards recommended no less than a hundred forty-four capacity facility through the year of twenty twenty-five. Obviously, we proved them wrong.
Right.
But if you also look at the design of the jail, um, if we did a one ninety-two or whatever, the infrastructure of this jail is gonna be for a four or five hundred bed facility.
Right.
So.
Yeah, the kitchen also.
If we exceed our needs right now, if we can project, you know, ten years, which is what we're trying to do with the commission right now, that'll put us in a position where we can add, you know, fifty bed pods at a time.
I also believe with the, uh, with a lot more beds than we need at this moment, would bring in income for us that would narrow down that tax dollar we're talking about.
And don't forget, we still have a ninety-two bed facility that sits over there that's still operational. And, you know, we've discussed several things, up to and including making it a transfer facility for female offenders that are already paper ready for TDC. I mean, that's something that the committee could also jostle around a little bit and nail down.
And we're not even thinking about, uh, any contracts we could have with ICE. With ICE being, uh, as active as they are now, that's another consideration we can bring to the table, and that would provide us with a lot of money.
I'm gonna stick to my initial, uh, smaller, better, um, if, you know, if they want to, that committee wanted to have some smaller meetings, town hall meetings or something in the evenings.
Yeah.
And get feedback from people that were involved in the previous committees and from the general public. It'd be much quicker and easier for that committee to do that than with our Commissioners' Court, because postal requirements and such. And if they could gather all that up on their committee level and then bring it to the Commissioners' Court meetings, when a lot of people.
Yeah.
That's exactly what I wanted to work in this, but I'd like to make that as a motion.
Is. Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, Commissioner Matthews, what is the motion you're making?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to form a committee. For the building of the new Corial County Jail, suggesting Ashby, Ashby Matthews and Williams and anyone else the Commissioners' Court builds will be needed. So at this time, is there anyone else hurting? Using Ben Brennan as advisory.
Yeah, you gotta have a, you gotta have a, I mean, a number.
Yeah, I'll, I'll help y'all.
Yeah. You don't need to be on the committee.
Either three or five.
What exactly is the committee gonna do? I mean, the agenda up here is very vague, it just says for the building of the jail, of course, no funds appropriated, there's no tax rate.
That's what we would do, put all that together, present.
What's presented to the court to vote on it?
Yes. And update it, urgently. The whole package, just put it together, um, once we get to items. The whole package. Just put it together. Um, once we get to items thirty and twenty-seven, thirty, we, you know. Um, I just feel like there's a lot that needs to be worked through and doing it through Commissioners Court not seem to move too fast. We need to move just a little faster on both, both buildings. I know Judge Miller wants the, uh, to move really fast on the next item. You said eight months and nine months? But if we don't form a committee, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna move forward with building the jail? How are we gonna move forward with any decisions that need to be made?
All I'm saying is the motion is very vague. It's just a committee for a jail. I mean, I'm asking questions because.
Yeah.
Last time we formed this committee was very specific which options we're gonna be looking for, this and that.
I would think all options. I mean, we need to, to update everything that Brandon just mentioned and, and get together with a plan, you know, to proceed.
So the committee.
Committee would basically be assigned the task of taking this old utility service study, taking it to the engineer that the Commissioners Court chooses to work with regarding, um, checking on the infrastructure of the sewer and water, getting them to rebuild this if necessary, getting them to provide a contract to do that, bring it back to the Commissioners Court for approval, getting them to, you know, get this together, get it back to the committee, work through any questions that, that provider has through the committee, get the package for each particular thing that needs to be dealt with, brought back to Commissioners Court for approval or disapproval in some form.
To prepare.
Well, seeing that's what I think needs to be written out. I mean, I kind of agree with what Mr. Latham's saying is that's, I'd like to see what's that task and purpose so that we all can see that, that says, and cause not, not that I'm against it, I mean, it's just, it's that clarification of, hey, this is what they're, they're supposed to do. Cause without it being written, sometimes it'll morph or sometimes you cut some stuff off and you add this something to it.
They have no authority, so.
Yeah.
Basically what they're going to be doing is the tasks that are assigned to them by the Commissioners Court. So if we get down to number thirty.
Not to get there.
Court does that, then that task could be assigned to the committee to follow through with and get, get an I A contract from that engineer provider, get it reviewed, get it like the committee thinks it needs to be and review by me and Mr. Roberts and then get it on the agenda for the Commissioners Court to approve. That way there's somebody that's assigned a task, cause otherwise y'all are gonna, if y'all vote on number thirty and y'all vote to do that, then who's gonna do it? Who's gonna contact the engineer firm? Who's gonna get that contract drafted up? Who's gonna do all that?
I believe the, the instructions can come down from this court to the committee to do those things.
I think that's what Justin's talking about. What, what does that, I'll take in for this committee to do. I think, does that need to be in a motion for all the things Brandon had just suggested? Does that need to be in the motion? So y'all, I mean, y'all know what to do, but does it need to be in the motion? Need to be recorded. What's gonna be going on? I, I don't know. Brandon can answer that, but he's leaving.
Well, today's motion, today's motion would be just to form a committee, uh, to move forward with the, the building of the new jail and then from there we can.
Did you get a second on that?
No, yeah.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Did you get a second? Yeah, I did. I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Ms. Simpson, you're good with the motion and the second?
Are we good with Scott or you good?
I mean, are you?
Being part of our.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're good, Commissioner Matthews, you have your second. All right.
All those in favor say aye.
All right.
All those opposed say no. As I have a motion carries. Under number twenty-nine, discussion action to form a committee for the building of the new Corial County Law Enforcement Center, suggesting Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Jones, Chief Deputy Wilcox, and anyone else Commissioners Court feels will be needed. Commissioner Ashby.
Y'all don't beat me up too bad on this, but it's the same thing. Just, just the law enforcement center. I believe that, uh, that, you know, with the two separate committees, that they can go out and, and see the needs of that sound and bring it back to the Commissioners Court as well as Commissioners Court instructing them for, you know, the information that they need. And I know that two members, only two members of the court can be on a committee.
Well, based off some comments by, you know, Commissioner Matthews, not that I'm opposed to what, what he's saying, but it seems like that's a topic that's come up, you know, here in the last maybe four to six weeks, of the Sheriff's Department offices being co-located with the jail if, if we're on nine twenty-nine, as opposed to the law enforcement center, which I believe our discussions in the facilities workshop that we had in the March timeframe, I think it was, uh, we had identified, uh, uh, Sheriff's Department, gang warden, uh, JP's and, and et cetera. There was, there was a co-host that were going to go into the law enforcement center. Now, so when we're making this, this particular motion, um, I do wanna be very clear about what encompasses the law enforcement center. Because that's gonna have an effect on, uh, who needs to participate in that as well as, uh, obviously what the proposed location.
Right.
Or being, you know, where we're kind of leading with that location. So.
Yeah, cause if you move it out there and you put the JP's out there, then you're gonna have to redraw the line. And those lines may be redrawn in twenty twenty anyway. But, uh, one JP could be housed out there anyways, um, because they would be in every scene. Then we would have to move another JP into another building. Um, I don't know.
Aren't they gonna have to be redrawn if we use the Foxworth property too?
Yeah, sure, but.
I mean, just since it's small.
Yeah.
It's a little CAD drawing. They take that dot and go, like, you know, somebody, somebody that has a good mouse that works.
It'd be my name.
Drags that frame down.
Yeah.
The, uh, uh, but yes, I mean, see that would impact, I mean, uh, we need to talk DPS because we talked, you know, about putting DPS there.
That would be a, a function I would think of a committee.
The, uh, you know, like I said, gang warden, JP's, uh, emergency, emergency management, so we talked about getting there. So it's changing up the dynamics of what, uh, not that we voted on because it was the workshop, but I thought that was kind of the recurrence of where we go.
My, my whole goal on the law enforcement center was to take it out of the jail contractor's hands and save that money for the tax rate.
Yes, yes.
Um, but my original goal years ago was to get that Foxworth property back on the tax road, Warrenburg or something, I don't know, something twenty-four hours. Uh, that would benefit Corial County. Um, but you could always use the backside of the property, you know, uh. I, I don't have a problem forming a committee on it, but, um, it depends on what you're gonna put in. It depends on where you're gonna.
You're either gonna have to, you're gonna have to put them all in, like the JP's or the gang warden, or load them, or, or foot build on the Foxworth property.
Sure.
I'd like to start on that first, you know, but I do think that, that the location, the use of the builder and whether the main size, main hole is.
Sure.
I agree back up on twenty-seven. You know, it's it's saying, um, the jail at the wood, you know, next to the Woodman unit and then Justice Center at the Foxworth facility. Yeah. I thought we had decided the Foxworth property was gonna be where it should be, but I, I think that's.
Well, there's a lot of things, in my opinion, you know, you could free up around the courthouse. Uh, if you didn't have that, you're not gonna have as many. There'll be freer parking, uh, which you know parking's a mess around the courthouse. Uh, they didn't claim that eighteen ninety-three. No, ma'am. So, I, I mean.
And if Commissioner Moore speaks to your point, I'm, I'm not sure that twenty-seven's bad the way it's worded because you might learn a great deal about where you want to put this when you talk to an architect about designing a facility to go on that spot over there. It may become very clear whether that's something that you want to do or not.
But isn't that what the committee's for? Is to decide those factors after we get the information coming in?
But I think we need to look at those two, those two areas. Let's not, see, you're saying it's not incorrectly worded, really?
No, because, I mean, that's, the design, much like this jail design is gonna work one place or another. Once you decide what all you want in it and they go to draw it on a piece of paper and you see the footprint of it, it may make it necessary to come back to the board and say, this is not gonna work or the only way this is gonna work is if we put some of these functions elsewhere and then the court's gonna have to have that discussion and make a decision. But you're not gonna have the information you need to make that decision until you get somebody on board to draw that out, see what the footprint's gonna look like with everything you want in it. And I'll just have a discussion an hour later, but I will tell y'all that there's, there's some changes coming in the way we handle intake of criminal offense after arrest. The latest casualty of that's Galveston County. The legislature did not address it last session. The federal lawsuit in Dallas, Harris, and some others, Galveston being one of them. U- Harris County's got decided first. Dallas County saw the train coming, changed theirs to match what the Fifth Circuit told Harris County to do. And Galveston County was still fighting the federal court rule here about, sometime in the last thirty days, that they were gonna have to start doing things differently, much like Harris and Dallas County. And it's just a matter of time. When we get dragged into that, we're, we're going to have to have a facility at intake of criminal offenses capable of a live hearing with participants at the setting of bond. And so that area is not currently in this design, but it is going to have to be included. So depending on how we're going to do the, well, that's the conversation I have, as the committee members, the court either wants. If we're going to have it detached, you know, originally we're talking about having as a courtroom facility as any of it down here for some of the other court functions. We're gonna have to have some court functions in the jail there regardless and maybe there's some, maybe there's some benefit to having it out there with the court that can be used by the same magistrates that are also having justice court in those facilities. If it was adjacent to the jail facility, it would make that easier. But I don't know. It might, me, it just matters, but I don't know the answer yet. That's something that we're gonna have to consider.
Commissioner Ashby, if you wanna recommend that, I'm, I'm willing to say. I'm willing to be on there for a judge. Uh, make that my motion and I'm, I'm sure if there's anyone else who wanna add to, add a chief deputy, Mark Wilcox.
Second, I do, Mark, but you're on this committee.
Hey, we start building the law.
We'll get the shovels.
Are you good with that, Ms. Simpson?
Not at all.
Okay.
I'm trying not to. Ray Ashby, who was his second?
Second.
Commissioner Matthews, what you good with the wording on that?
I'm checking it in.
Okay, all right. Very good. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No, I'm sorry. I was looking at the next one. I was thinking of something else.
Has she got a bid first?
That is.
Anybody who's ever, I, I don't know if that's ever been reported, that someone has voted against a motion that they have made.
Mr. Caper, is there, is there a reference? Is there a precedence for that anywhere in the, in the state?
Just following along, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Uh, number thirty, discussion action on chairman of engineer to assist with assessment, design, and planning for water and sewer infrastructure preparation and construction of a new jail facility. Commissioner Moore.
Uh, yeah, I just think one of the first steps that we need to address is, uh, getting an engineer of ours to, um, assist us with the C, uh, with CDCJ. So I would like to see, um, my preference would be to use Walker Partners, uh, which is a engineering firm that, uh, they're way go. I think they're clean. Uh, but they're doing very well, um, versus the city of Gainesville and their infrastructure. So I think it would be, I've not spoke with them, but I certainly think it would be, uh, beneficial to use that particular firm uh, from a cost standpoint, uh, compared to mere with, pretty much with whatever Gainesville has in the ground. That would be my thorough recommendation. I don't know what else we need to, to, uh, do with anything like that. Is that sufficient to actually say Walker Partners?
Yes, a professional service is not required to go out for bid. Because of their special knowledge of the infrastructure that currently exists, that, uh, it makes sense to do that. I don't see any reason at this point to go out for requests for qualifications for this part. And it would be a good measuring stick to decide if that is the firm that the court wants to use to follow up as a quality control measure on the construction of some of these new facilities. So that is gonna be necessary, in my opinion, unless we have nobody else to do it.
Right. I'll make that motion then, Judge, to, uh, actually have, uh, Walker Partners. I would only remain office unit, but, um, for that item, uh, for out of thirty, secure the engineer Walker Partners.
Okay. Do we have a motion? To secure Walker Partners as an engineer to assist with the assessment, design, planning. Did that, did you get that wording good then? Okay. Commissioner Moore, second from Commissioner Matthews. Uh, with that, uh, is, is that all the assessment, design, planning for water and sewer infrastructure?
Moving twenty-seven down past that, the only reason I did that is, is, it's the same thing. I was actually looking for an R Q for the, uh, the Foxworth location as well. So I think, I think we need to keep these two items separate, right? Now, I'll take one to say.
Good.
So as a practical matter, what will happen if this motion, is it consecutive?
Yes, sir.
Passes will be, is somebody will reach out to Walker Partners and ask them to provide us an I A, 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 a contract for performance of these services. They will have their rates and all that stuff in it, which will come back to the court for approval. Because right now we don't know if they're interested or what they're gonna charge or anything like that. So this will give Mr. Moore permission to and get a contract from them with numbers in it, bring it back to the court for final approval with the numbers in it. And I assume they will be reasonable, but, you know, I don't know. They may not be, they may be interested or it may be something that we can't do. We'll see. But that will come back to the court for final approval for the money. But that will come back to the court for final approval for the money.
And it states just the new jail facility, doesn't it state the, uh?
Right. This will just be for engineer firm, take this, utility service study, which I think is still, as far as gallons per minute and gallons per day, for a two hundred and forty bed jail facility, probably still fairly accurate, twenty-seven thousand four hundred sixty gallons a day is, uh, what they think two hundred and forty bed jail facility, and that's the wastewater flow rate. And the water usage is about, uh, thirty-sixty gallons per minute. And wastewater flows about twenty gallons per minute, so I guess something happens to sixteen gallons a minute. I don't know, but anyway, so I said. And so they'll be able to take this, look at these capacity, look at where the meters are, and where we can tie on that or pant, and come up, help us come up with a plan to visit with the city about what's practical and what's not, any infrastructure requirements. They'll have to be met, because some of those can be pretty big ticket items, and it can take a good bit of time, so.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
I'll try to have that, uh, contract back, that'll make clean.
Okay. Are you gonna vote against from the motion? That's what I wanted to make. You didn't make that motion?
She did.
Yes. He made, he made the motion.
He made the motion.
But if you vote no, then I'll help me out a lot.
This was thirty. All those voters say aye? All those opposed, they no?
We'll try to have that back by next week, our next, uh, our next meeting.
I was having a motion carries. Uh, item number twenty-seven, following item number thirty. Discussion in action for permission for court to go out for an architect firm to provide an RFQ on the infrastructures on building the new jail next to the Woodman unit and the new justice center at the old Foxworth location. Mr. Ashby?
That was the word you almost talked about, uh, you know, the last motion was just for the new jail center. It wasn't for the law enforcement center. So, kinda, should I table this motion? I think I'll table this.
I don't, I don't think so. No, so, just to be crystal clear, the engineer with item thirty is just for one particular little old thing.
Right.
To work with the city on water, wastewater, infrastructure, period solution. They will not, until and unless there's further action, have anything to do with the actual construction of the new facility. So, your item's still good, in my opinion. There's two different things. If the court's interested, is a request for qualifications for an architect, two different projects. It'd have to be the same architect, because they could be in two different locations and not connected to one another. And, so I think that that is still fine for y'all to discuss and make a decision on today. It will be totally separate from Walker and anything to do with the actual construction. They're just gonna help us plan and deal with the city on what can we tap into, what can't we tap into, where we, we have to have, we have to come from a different direction, what we're gonna have to come across that, we're gonna have to pump it, and we're gonna have, what we're gonna have to do, so that we know where we're going.
Okay. Alright, well, is this getting ahead of ourselves? I mean, and again, I'm not trying to delay the process, but I'm saying, okay, we just established two committees. They're supposed to be answering some questions that I believe that an architect firm would need for, for us to be able to make a decision on what architect firm we would, we'd go with. Because RFQ now does, does not necessarily mean, mean you need design plans. They're gonna give you your, their qualifications, and we sweat, make up qualifications. But we have to have, you know, what potentially is, is one is jail construction, the other one is very much office building type stuff, which are two distinctly different construction techniques. So is this the appropriate time to address the RFQ issue before we even know what, what the feedback is coming back from the committee?
I think it would give the committees a chance to, to reach out to the architect.
I would think you would get more interest on the justice center than on the jail. I think the number of architects of jails is gonna be a short list.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe two. One of them, we already have a great deal of information from. Because of once we worked with it last time. I don't watch for the new justice center, but I think you'd get more interest. And we could also discuss doing a, uh, contractor risk on, at some point, on that project, with. So we might have some plans to, uh, get a bill of apartment from the city, so.
Unless we don't build anything in the city.
All that out there in the city too. City and they saw that prison property. Ours was previously part of prison property.
Yes. Except the huge. You're gonna drop the cities, pop one for the free pound.
So I'll make that motion that we go out for an architect firm to provide an RFQ on the infrastructures on the building of the new jail next to the Woodman unit and a new justice center at the old Foxworth location.
We have a motion from Commissioner Ashby?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Matthews. Any further discussion?
So this is?
Two RFQs.
One for each.
One for each.
Does this, does this, uh, the way this is worded, do that restrict us to just the Foxworth?
Well, the, uh, architect firm will be providing you an RFQ. Have their qualifications in it. It will be, the RFQ will be totally unrelated to a public specific design or really location for that matter.
With Walker Partners' assessment on item number thirty, they would be able to say what, and I mean, really, the, the, the important, or I, I think the logical thing to do is we open up all of the properties that the county owns. Tell Walker Partners, this is what we have. What types of facilities would these properties support? And give us a recommendation. I mean, we say the Foxworth property, I mean, that may not be, based off of grade, or based off of drainage, some other, you know, that may not be, uh, the ideal choice. It may be some other property that we own, that Walker Partners says, hey, this is, this is what we recommend to. So it's recommendation, and then it's also usability, is what, what I would say. It should not be limited, I don't think it will be limited to just the Foxworth location.
So, should I add, or any other application?
I, I don't think, I don't think it would be, because you, that RFQ, that architects will come in and say whether to walk or walk.
Right.
Uh, they're gonna say, okay, you can build your buildings, but can't park yours, or, you know.
So the question for qualifications, and I was gonna, I'll try to find one, I don't want to use from last time. The place people still say, Corral County at this time is contemplating building a approximately twelve thousand square foot justice center for use by Corral County in law enforcement administration. And we are this time soliciting qualified architect firms to design facility in conjunction with Corral County Commission. Please submit your qualifications to the county judge at such and such address, on or for such and such date. That's all it's gonna say.
Right.
Yeah, they're gonna send something in that says, you know, we built law enforcement centers here and there and under, and new jails, other administration buildings, and here's, you know, all about us, and how good we are, and, it really will not, will not have fees in it normally. Statue says that the government body shall select based on qualifications, and then attempt to negotiate a reasonable contract with that most qualified company.
And if the agreement can't be hashed out, then you go to the next one that you determine is the most qualified, and,
Go from there.
And go from there? So we've got a motion and a second. You agree with that, Ms. Simpson? Okay. Any further discussion? All those voters say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, they no? I said it. Motion carries. Item number thirty-one, consider memorandum of understanding between Corral County Sheriff's Office and Evan Independent School District. Should we go out in packets?
It's identical to the one we have with the Gainesville Independent School District, and what it does is, uh, allows us to partner up with the school district to, uh, run our canines and stuff within the schools, interact with children, interact with, uh, staff. Just basically identical to the one we already have.
Motion to a free judge.
Got a motion from Commissioner Jones?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Matthews. Any further discussion? All those voters say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, they sign?
I voted for that.
Did you vote for that? Okay, alright.
You don't ever go like that, I already know that.
From that direction. Thought I heard an echo from that direction. Item number thirty-two, consider memorandum of understanding between Corral County Sheriff's Office and the Texas Narcotics Officers Association.
How that came about, the regional, uh, president of T N O A, uh, is the Hamilton Police Chief. And, uh, they've reached out to us in an effort, we're a provider, uh, to partner up with us and do some training here locally.
The classroom at, Sheriff, the classroom at, at three oh one Veterans Avenue, is that, is that the AgriLife building?
I'm sorry, say it again, I was getting carried on two conversations.
Oh, 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 uh, okay, it lists the classroom here at three oh one Veterans Avenue, is that the AgriLife building?
That's the, uh, uh, conference center there, the, civic center, Gainesville Civic Center.
Okay.
It all is good. I'll make it a motion, just to, uh, for the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Moore, a second from Commissioner Ashby. Any further discussion? All those voters say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, they no? I said a motion carries. Item number thirty-three, consider the contractual training renewal application with the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement. This is the, the, one of the five-year agreements, is that?
Yes, that's correct. As the, uh, former training coordinator, and I've dealt with this before, this is a contract we have to have with T E C O to maintain our providers license, so that we can put on classes, not only for ourselves, but for other agencies that we have come in. Uh, as I said, it's a, uh, it just comes around every five years, I believe it's, uh, fifteen hundred dollars for the five years. Uh, a little something on providers. At this time, there's only three hundred providers for the entire state of Texas, and we happen to be one of them. Uh, T E C O has come out that if you lose your providers license, they're not issuing any more. So that means every class that we put on, we'd have to send our folks somewhere else to do it, at a pre-exemplary policy. And we are doing more and more of our own classes now.
Second.
Uh, motion from Commissioner Ashby, a second from Commissioner Matthews. Any further discussion? All those voters say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, they sign? I said it, motion carries. Item number forty-four, consider interlocal cooperative agreement between Corral County, Burnet County for jail services. Sheriff, I don't know if you got a copy of this, but they sent it directly to our office, or to my office, uh, first part of, or the middle of last week. Uh, it's the exact same interlocal agreement we approved about, uh, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, or something like that. Other than they've increased their price from forty to forty-five dollars per inmate, per day. Affected one in October.
Gotta have it.
Judge, I received an email late Friday or early this morning, I'm not sure which, regarding a question about accessibility of the inmates in Burnet County to their attorneys from many of, from Corral and Bell County, obviously, because that's on our employment list. Some of our contracts from other counties have provisions in it for remote contact, either by telephone or Skype-type, uh, devices. I have, I don't see anything that's written that touches on that one way or another. I don't know if sheriff's had any conversation with him about it, but I haven't, it just came up about before I came down here, so I'm not gonna visit the sheriff about it for him. Do you know what, how they've been handling that, Sheriff?
I do not, this is for a different, but, or they having issues with, uh?
I don't think they're having any issues yet. I think they're just curious if they're gonna have any issues. They haven't, we haven't had any, but, any down there long enough to have any issues yet, though.
No, but I was talking about like Vale and them, that, how is over there?
I, I can speak to it, Brandon, the, uh, you can get access to the clients via a scheduled interview, uh, or they have an unrecorded phone line, uh, that you can call at any time. They have two, uh, marked blackout periods, where they're doing count or whatever they do. Um, other than that, you, it's, it's pretty open. It's, it's, uh, way better than mine right now.
Very good, okay, very good. Well, I'll, I'll report that back to the judge that asked me the question.
Sheriff, what's the cost to keep an inmate in our jail right now?
I would have to do some more figures, uh, but last time-
You don't have to be exact, I was just curious.
I believe it's around forty-five. I mean, I wouldn't quote me on that, but we could figure that out.
I figured about seventy-two.
Yeah, I had it at sixty-seven.
Unless I'm doing it incorrectly, I looked at seventy-two dollars.
My motion pick it up.
You said seventy-two dollars?
He got, he got seventy-two, I got seventy, and you got sixty-seven?
And, you know, some of it, some of it may be, uh, it may be based on the original cost of foods and, and things like that. And I know that, that, uh, paper menus were being done, and so some of that savings wasn't there, but, I got the number at sixty-seven. That's why I was talking about, I was talking about. Your cost to house a deer there?
Judge, I'm making a motion for a grid for Corial County, Burnet County, for jail searches.
Second.
We got a motion from Commissioner Jones, second from Commissioner Matthews. Any further discussion?
Sheriff, this, this one has a sixty-day, um, termination.
It does? I had to say it, too.
Says sixty.
Yeah, sixty-day notice of any change.
I'm not going to change or termination.
All right. I would tell you, I have a good bit of, uh, I've done a good bit of math on the cost of incarceration for certain places. One thing you have to watch out when you're doing that math is that, you know, if you include our transport officers, which are helping the jagers, if you, you know, are looking officer, which is looking people in from all the arresting agencies in our county, some of those things, you know, are not necessarily housing costs, in my opinion. You look at just the housing cost there. These other counties are charging for thousands or hundreds. Some of those things are not apples and oranges.
Certainly, but they go, they go along with the holistic, I mean, you've got a facility, you've got to do the whole, all the facility. Unless, because if you didn't have it, you didn't have it. You don't think there's a difference at all. Anyway, okay, we've got a motion and a second, is there any, any other discussion?
Well, you wouldn't have those. Because if you have a facility or not, you still have to have somebody bring them to court.
Yes.
Somebody to look at, work out fingerprints and, you know, that.
We're talking about operations versus housing. So there, there is a difference, and I think that's why I came up with sixty-two, but, you know.
Well, and if you also, if all the inmates, if all hundred and fifty inmates were under one roof, that per inmate would go down.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Considerably.
Yeah.
You going to figure your death service back in there per head per day and then, until your nuts bleed out? It's a large number.
I mean, you got to, yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of that cost too.
I mean, if you had a facility that was designed right, instead of this nonsense we have, uh, at a hundred and fifty inmates, we need four officers. Well, I've got five on every shift, and sometimes it's still isn't enough by the time you're shipping and receiving and doing all of that.
It does operate.
Staffing, we have. It's just, we need a little better facility to, uh,
Then the court's going to be happier, because everybody's here, and we don't have to rush to get them. Try to get, figure out.
I mean, there's a huge, I wouldn't even say an argument, a huge discussion that would need to be had, uh, with all the facts versus part of it.
That's what we got those committees for. I think we're getting a little bit off topic of the agreement for Burnet County. I mean, you know, I, that's what I've come up.
No, you got it. We got it.
I thought we had a, yeah, we had a.
Wrong bill's in. That's what I just said. Yes, what I just said, we ain't voting.
I know, that's what I said.
Let's go, okay, come on.
All those who say aye? All those who vote, all those opposed, they no?
Yeah.
He voted on both sides.
No, I didn't, I said, okay. I'm good, let's go.
I was having motion carries. Pay bills. I don't even have the total amount, anybody has a,
Don got it.
Total amount. I would.
I'm paying six hundred and five thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Is that a motion?
Second.
We got a motion from Commissioner Jones, a second from Commissioner Matthews. All those who say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, they no? I was having motion carries.
Item number twenty.
Back to, item number twenty. All right, this is, well, I mean, just kind of, we can, I want to talk about this one second, so people that have read that and anticipated here, would understand this a little bit. Uh, Tex dot has approached, uh, uh, approached Commissioner Jones last week, before last. Uh, they want to, uh, do a, an improvement project on FM one oh seven. Uh, as part of that improvement project, uh, they want to widen, uh, create a, a wider, safer shoulder, and then there would be some utilities that would be relocated in that. Uh, so what Tex dot is looking for is our participation, uh, because it would, uh, it's a state requirement to have ten percent participation, uh, with the county, if they're going to do the improvement. Otherwise, they're just going to overlay, uh, put a new surface on, uh, that section of, uh, state, of, of FM one oh seven, that is State Highway two thirty-six, uh, from, uh, yeah, for toward thirty-six to the McClintock County line. That is what that particular item, uh, is concerning. So with that, Commissioner Jones, uh, has made a motion to table it for our next meeting, uh, so that we can allow, uh, the Tex dot representative to be here. And a second from Commissioner Moore. So any further discussion on the Tex dot project, item number twenty? All those who say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same time? I was having motion carries. Okay. Commissioners reports. Commissioner Matthews?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Moore? Commissioner Jones?
I have nothing, good.
Commissioner Ashby?
Nothing.
Good.
Okay. Uh, again, we thank all of you for attending and your participation in the meeting. Uh, I have nothing, uh, we stay adjourned.